Good evening, Daytona Beach, and welcome to the June 15th, 2022 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us tonight, and at this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All of the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at the designated time. And resolutions under administrative item number 10 are open for public comment, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time is expired. Item number 12 is the public comment forum, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green forum will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in a public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting, order refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Okay, we have a roll call.
Commissioner Cantu. Here. Commissioner Henry.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Traeger. Commissioner Strickland.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Traeger for leaving.
Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Strickland and a second Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. This time, we will have the invocation led by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pleasure of allegiance led by Commissioner Cantu.
Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that's within me. Bless his holy name. And, Lord, you've been such a good God to us, and we thank you for all that you've done, all that you're doing, and all that you shall do in each and every one of our lives, in our city, with our visitors, with our citizens, and we just thank you for being such a good God. We've been such a blessed city. And as we convene this evening to make decisions in regards to the city, we ask that you would guide us, oh great Jehovah. Help us to understand what would be your way, not our way, but your way. And although the decisions we make may not be pleasing to all, let it benefit all, and we'll be careful to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise. In the mighty and matchless name of Jesus, I pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the May 18th, 2022 city commission meeting. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero. This time, we will prepare to hear from our city manager, who will address any changes to our agenda.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we're removing item 8A, the Business Enterprise Management Department SP Plus Corporation Amendment Number One to Contract Number 20501. Item 8P, the following changes: Correction, $643.53 to leisure services to cover the cost of Purple Princess Inc. renting Sunnyland Park for one Saturday per month for the next three months to conduct their meetings from Mayor Henry's Bike Week sponsorship funds; $500 to Ancient City Pipes and Drums Inc., DBA Coastal Florida Police and Fire Pipes and Drums for the Fourth of July Parade from Commissioner Cantu's Bike Week sponsorship funds; $250 to Coming Together Inc. for the Midtown BBQ Cook-Off from Commissioner Reed's Bike Week sponsorship funds; $200 to the Filipino Association and America Corp. for the Filipino Clayan Festival on June 12th, 2022 from Commissioner May's Bike Week sponsorship funds. Item 10B, the Second Amendment to 1500 Tamoca Farms Road PD THP LLC. The ordinance has been revised, and a copy of the revised ordinance has been placed on the dais. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say that the Purple Princesses, you pay for this month, but they won't start until next month because this Saturday is Juneteenth celebration?
So we'll note that with the leisure services.
To get into left.
Also, isn't that park being renovated, the inside of the building, is it? Or is it?
Which?
Sunnyland.
Sunnyland.
Oh, yes. Yes, Sunnyland is, they're working on it, so we will make sure that the appropriate time for their meetings will be available. If we have to look at another location, we'll do that.
Okay. Could you notify me when you do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think they're listening in the back as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Who's listening?
Staff.
Oh. Thank you, staff.
Do we have, there was an amendment? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Reed and May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
We don't have any presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to item number seven. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. My first speaker, I believe it's Carmen Clark, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
While Ms. Clark comes, I would like to make note of the presence of a student intern who is interning in the city manager's office and seems to be off to a great start. Please welcome Tyler Robinson.
Kim, would you do me a favor? Would you get the mobile microphone from? Just give us one second, and we're going to give you the mobile microphone.
Mayor Henry.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Mayor Henry and commission and other members of his cabinet. Okay, I'm here in regards to item number eight, N. In regards to the restroom, I just wanted to put emphasis on, because I'm not quite sure how this goes, because this is my first time doing this, but I just wanted to put some emphasis on the need of the restroom being ADA compliant, because as I said at the Midtown meeting, I did go in there, and I could not use the restroom, and I could not get out. Someone had to come and open the door so I can be able to back out of there. And then I had to go downstairs, which it was dark, and it was, the cleaning person was there. And as for safety concerns for myself, I did not feel comfortable, but I did use the restroom down there, so I just wanted to make sure that some emphasis was put on this because you have to look at it as that I'm quite sure I'm not the only person that comes to these meetings that's on a scooter or a wheelchair, and to make sure that it's in ADA compliant. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Your suggestion, podium for people in wheelchairs, high podium for people who are able to stand.
Okay, and how about, how about just a retractable podium, or one that goes up and down? I don't know, maybe that might be easier.
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Frederick Brown, 1508 Kristen Ridge, Daytona Beach. Yeah, and even though I didn't put on my form, I do support Ms. Clark in that, and I know the city is going to get it done, and I know with our manager, with the speed to which he operates, it will be done quickly. I wrote to speak about item on the agenda, 8B, and maybe I missed something on that, I'm sorry, eight, I don't think I get this right. Two, 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 two. Yes. About the rec center. And I'm a little bit concerned, and maybe I missed something there, but I believe these positions should be ongoing support positions because I know in my heart that the mayor will see the importance of this center and will ensure that it does become a restored site, and I feel that the citizens, of course, are continuing in ever-growing numbers to support that effort, and I know the mayor and the rest of the commission will support that. Commissioner Traeger is not here, I know she supports it very strongly, and I, just in the time that I spend driving by it every day, realize how important that center is to the community, and I also realize that while you're approving other monies for children's playground, which is good stuff, some of us adults need some money spent, so senior citizens in particular, so that we can have a rec center so we can play. And I, again, I would like to see these positions extend beyond August 3rd, which I think you currently have the date, so I don't know what the city's plans are, I haven't seen it publicly, maybe I've missed something, but again, I can't emphasize how important this rec center is going to be to our community and how soon we need to get started on restoring it. That's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. With regard to 8N as well, the city constantly, for some reason, I don't know why, does never think about ADA compliance. When we do sidewalks on Peninsula and Main Street, they redid three of the intersections, three of the corners, for wheelchair access, and then the one by Boot Hill, no. So in order to go from one corner to the X, they had to go down the street into the parking lot and then come back to go down Main Street. We do this constantly. We redid the parking lot for the Peabody. There was no access except for, from the parking lot down the ramp to auditorium, and those in a wheelchair had to get into the street and then come back up the sidewalk. You can't have a wheelchair going directly, especially in a downward slope, into a street with ongoing traffic. We do this constantly. I'm worried about the cost. $70,000, take out a couple of partitions. I know we're going to redo it, but to what extent? I know we can make it pretty. Jim did it when we had the recession, we had like 27% tax increase, and he retilled the bathroom. We had no money for anything, but he retilled the bathroom. He redid the parking lot, all the landscaping, when we had no money. So I know Jim left you with a ton of money that you're finding, but let's not go wild because I'm noticing all over the place that we're getting new furniture, we're getting this and that and the other stuff, painted the building, those are things that we need to do, but let's try to do minimum on the bathroom, but yes, it's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Minimum on ADA.
Our final speaker on the consent agenda is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, Marjorie Johnson. 122 South Heath Street. I'm here tonight to speak about the Recreation Center. That center needs to be restored. It was in good shape when you, Mayor Henry, was elected, and when Ms. Reed, you've been here since 2012, and Ms. Reed was elected, the rest of you wasn't here. But you sat around and let the building become dilapidated, run down. You neglected to do your job, you did not keep that building up. Then you began to get estimates from maybe two persons, and they got large estimates and said, you want to tear it down. The people in the city of Daytona do not want that building towed down. Has a lot of history. You neglected it. You want to, you set up this committee, and Ms. Reed went and put somebody on the committee that lived in Port Orange, and I spoke out about it at the meeting. You do not appoint Port Orange residents to serve on a committee when we have people right here in the city of Daytona Beach that need to be on that committee. So this is why I spoke up, and this is why you see on the agenda tonight that there's a new person that's going to be appointed at the end of this meeting, Nikisha Harris, and she should have been the one in the first place because you only do the proper thing. You're here to do the people's work. Service is the price you pay for the space you occupy. Now, if you don't want to do your work, you're in the wrong place. I am a community activist, and I will continue to speak up for justice and equality for everybody. This is our city, we pay the bills, and we want to pay you to do your work, so do not be appointing anybody that lives in Port Orange to any committee in Daytona. We have enough people here in this city who will happily serve on these committees, and they don't do this at the county level because I've served on six of their committees, including the bridge. I have designed that bridge there on Orange Avenue. You know that, Mayor Henry. My friend, Josh Wagner, who I got elected twice, Billy Wheeler, twice, the mayor of Auburn, twice, they make sure they put good people on these committees to serve, and this is what we do in Daytona. Not Port Orange residents, but make sure you're doing your job properly, and make sure you're appointing people in Daytona and not in Port Orange. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Doyle Lewis.
Prior to Doyle coming, Ms. Johnson, you are so correct. You know, Mr. Mayor, when I appointed that lady to that board, I appointed someone that I knew would speak up, and I knew that we already had several men and we needed a woman. And Ms. Johnson, I thank you. Thank you so much for bringing that to my attention, because I didn't know where she lived, I just knew her from being on a previous committee, that she would definitely bring something, a voice, to that committee. And so once that was brought to our attention, and we went back and we looked at the resolution, and the resolution said that the person had to reside in Daytona Beach, we corrected that. So this evening, I made another appointment. I recognized that someone from my zone was already there, so there was no need to recognize Zone 6, but I wanted there to be another female, and that's who I chose, because there are some who would not be chosen.
And Nikisha is going to do a fantastic job. She's going to do an awesome job.
Thank you. Good, good, good choice.
Mr. Lewis.
Doyle.
Good evening. It's amazing the ADA situation came up tonight. I'm glad I came tonight. The last two weeks have been interesting, to say the facts. Back a couple of years ago, when I was injured, I tried to ride a three-wheel DeBosa bicycle down the sidewalks. It was almost impossible. Whenever you ride an ADA wheelchair or a bicycle, it's got two wheels in the back, it actually shakes you more and hurts you if you don't have ADA sidewalks. It can really, really hurt you. So what I did, and I was able to rehab myself very quickly, is I got on two-wheel bicycle, and that made me use my muscles, but some people can't do that. So that needs to be looked at all over the city, especially on A1A and everywhere. It's by the new parks. One side's got it nice, and the next side doesn't. It needs to be looked at on Main Street. They are sideways, and they're small. It's almost impossible, especially when you're meeting two. I know there's not much to do once you get to the bridge, but believe it or not, Main Street Bridge is a nightmare if you have one wheelchair coming one way and a bicycle coming the other way on the same side. It's a nightmare because you meet in the middle, and there's no way to really do anything unless you get somebody to help you, but that's, that bridge is a whole different ballgame. The other thing is the rec center. I am supporting to get that rehabbed, get it back into play. There are so many people dying to have a place to have a rec center in the area. They're just, they don't have the information, they haven't heard anything about it, it's hard to get information to them. They don't even know this is a fight. Half of them don't. So if I'm out there talking about the City Island area. The new park actually is a nice park. I actually stopped in it, but it definitely didn't end up the way it was supposed to. It's not supposed to be a private park in those areas. I found that out today. I was doing other business this past week. It is definitely not what the citizens asked for when they agreed to allow that to happen. It is completely backwards from what the citizen allowed. I can't believe it ended up like this. I think we should put more brick walls in front of the people who insisted on doing it this direction. The paper said that the city officials wanted it this way. I'm not sure that's exactly what it was. I think it's because money was thrown at certain people for certain reasons. And my name is Doyle H.
That was our final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We'll take the motion from Commissioner Reed and the second from Commissioner Strickland. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. The motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearings. Item 9A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division to add medical, dental, clinic, office, and financial institution to OP zoning. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning, the city's land, excuse me, an ordinance amending the city's land development code, Section 5.2, principal uses, by adding medical or dental clinic, office, and bank or financial institution without drive-through service as principal uses in the Office Professional OP zoning district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing directions to the codifier, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a slow section.
I don't have any speakers for this item.
All in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9B, which is Development Administrative Services Planning Division, 530 North Charles Street, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance adopting a Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment in accordance with Section 163.3187 of Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 0.7 plus or minus acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Hazel Street and North Charles Street from office transition to local service industry, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9C, it's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, 530 North Charles Street, rezoning from residential professional to local industry. This is an ordinance on second reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 0.35 plus or minus acres of property generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Hazel Street and North Charles Street from residential professional to local industry, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have questions or comments, Commissioner Strickland?
I have no speakers for this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9D, it's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Flood Ordinance, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the city land development code, Section 6.15 relating to flood plain management, 6.23 relating to minimum floor elevations, 9.1 relating to local amendments to the Florida Building Code, and 11.5 providing definitions, and LDC Appendix A relating to application procedures to implement changes in the National Flood Insurance Program and provide consistency with the Florida Building Code, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So moved. Second.
All right, we'll take the motion from Commissioner Reed and the second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or speakers?
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving on to item number 9E, it's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, waive impact fees, Affordable Housing, Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the city land development code, Section 6.22, Affordable Housing, to include impact fees as a type of development permit fee to be administratively waived in association with the development of affordable housing units, subject to conditions, including the sunsetting of administrative impact fee waivers after September 30th, 2027, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing directions to the codifier, and providing an effective date. So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments or speakers?
And I have no speakers for this item.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Good job.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 9F, which is the Public Works Technical Services Final Plat approved for Clyde Morris Landings. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial. A resolution approving a revised final plat for Clyde Morris Landings, a mixed-use development of approximately 37.96 acres of land located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, 2,000 feet south of LPGA, authorizing the city manager to sign the revised final plats and permit recordation thereupon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date. So moved. Second.
All right, we'll take the motion from Commissioner Cantu and the second from Commissioner Henry.
And I do have Ms. Jessica Gao here on behalf of applicant for any questions, and no other speakers.
Do we have any questions of Ms. Gao? No questions, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay, moving on to item 9G, it's the Public Works Technical Services, preliminary and final plat and contract for plat recording for Greyhawk Unit 2. This is a resolution, quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for the Greyhawk Unit 2, a single-family subdivision located approximately 19.66 acres at Northerly Terminus of Champion's Drive within the LPGA International Development, subject to conditions, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation thereupon meeting certain conditions precedent, approving a contract for plat recording for the subdivision, and providing an effective date. So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner May.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division. This is 1500 Tamoca Farms Road, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So this is the introduction of the ordinance that I will read into the record. An ordinance adopting Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment in accordance with Section 163.3187 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 46.8 plus or minus acres of property located at 1500 Tamoca Farms Road, north of First Baptist Parkway and west of Tamoca Farms Road, from Level 1 residential and potentially environmentally sensitive to Level 2 residential and potentially environmentally sensitive, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood U, to restrict the maximum residential density for the property, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action for this item is July 6.
All right. They're not doing that.
Okay.
Don't know about that. Don't talk about that. Go ahead.
Okay. We're going to move on to item 10B. This is an introduction of an ordinance that I will read into the record. This is from the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, the Second Amendment to 1500 Tamoca Farms Road PD, Plan Development General. An ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the 1500 Tamoca Farms Road Plan District Agreement, formerly known as Tamoca Independent Living Plan District Agreement, to revise maximum permitted density, multifamily complex development criteria, and completion schedule, authoring the mayor and the city clerk to execute the Second Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action for this item will be July 6. Okay, moving on to item 10C is another introduction of an ordinance. It's Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Hillwood Plan Development General. This is an ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 211 plus or minus acres of property located approximately 1,200 feet east-southeast of the intersection of Williamson Boulevard and Bellevue Avenue, on the south side of Bellevue Avenue across from the Daytona Beach International Airport, from M3 General Industrial and MSD Major Sports District to PDG Plan Development General, approving the Hillwood Plan District Agreement, authorizing the development of large-scale light industrial uses, limited high-intensity commercial uses, and institutional uses, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. The public hearing and final action for this item is July 6. Moving on to item 10D is another introduction of an ordinance from the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, INA Group Plan Development General. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 225.2 plus or minus acres of property located east and adjacent to the city's municipal stadium and south of and adjacent to the city's water and wastewater treatment plant, from SFR5, Single Family Residential 5, to PDG Plan Development General, approving the INA Group Plan District Agreement to allow for a 352-unit single-family residential subdivision, subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. And the public hearing and final action on this item is July 6. Okay. Okay. Moving on to item 10E is the Human Resources Department Police and Fire Pension Plan Amendment. This is another introduction of an ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Daytona Beach amending the City of Daytona Beach's police officers and firefighters retirement system, subpart D of the City Charter, amending section three, Board of Trustees, providing for staggered terms for trustees, amending section six, benefits, benefit amounts and eligibility, providing for normal retirement eligibility for 20 years of service regardless of age, amending section eight, disability, deleting allowance of temporary relief, providing for severability of provisions, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances or parts, excuse me, repealing all warrants in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We're not voting on these.
Well, you can't. That's the thing, but anyway, we'll talk about that.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor wanted to.
It's only the second meeting where we don't do that, so.
Yeah, so, it's okay. Go ahead. Okay, so I've already read this into the record, and the public hearing and final action is July 6. Okay, and moving on to item 10F is another introduction of an ordinance. It's the Human Resources Department Outside Detail Rate Increase Amendment. An ordinance amending ordinance number 03-226, as amended by ordinance number 1051, ordinance number 1673, and ordinance 19317, to establish increased hourly rates to be charged for police officers who provide service to bars, lounges, and nightclubs located within the core beachside tourist area, with the increased rates being based on dates of service, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing when this ordinance shall take effect.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, if you afford me the opportunity, we were challenged, the mayor throughout a challenge almost 90 days ago. Chief Young made sure we knew that the 16th was the actual 90 days. I want to bring Mr. Sexton up. Him and his team have worked. I do see Mr. Scudero here also. Both chiefs are here. We, I think it exceeded their expectations. If y'all would nod or stand up so they could say we did, please. Our challenge was to find a way to recruit and retain our officers and find ways to make it more. And I spoke to all of the officers on, what's that, Friday? And I think Chief says he thinks I'm the most protective person in America right now. But I wanted to have Mr. Sexton, who him and his team worked on this, working with the group, to present what the outcome was, because we did not only, did we look at our police department, we looked at our fire department to make our agencies the highest paid and the best benefits of any agency in Volusia County. So go ahead, Mr. Sexton.
Good evening, Jim Sexton, Human Resources Director for the Record. As the city manager mentioned, we got the challenge directly from the board, and we sprung into action and started working on some ideas on how we could make it a better opportunity for incoming police officers and probably just as important, if not more important, retaining the ones that were already on board. So we looked at several things. As you know, the ordinance we just read into the record prior to the one, I'm sorry, the one prior to the one we just heard was the one that we actually negotiated back in October for the two-year deal that we're in, which changes the normal retirement years of service from 25 to 20 years of service. So at any age, an officer after working 20 years can retire. We had changed that back in 2014 to increase it to 25, but realized now that probably wasn't the best of ideas, so we're fixing that back.
Can you tell us why it wasn't the best of ideas?
Because it's not as competitive now. So what happened is everybody else stayed 20 years, and now, you know, when people were looking at agencies, in addition to the starting pay, do you have a step plan, a lot of the things, then they were looking at, well, I gotta work 25 years at Daytona Beach, or 10 years and be 55 years old, or I could go to one of those neighboring jurisdictions and work 20 and retire at 40 or 42. If you started here at 22, you could retire at 42. So we're just moving that back to the 20-year requirement. The outside detail rate, what you're seeing there is currently a police officer that works in outside detail makes $40 per hour. We charge the venue $45 an hour. And what we were running into is for our, as we called it in the ordinance core, beachside district, the bar area. So any officer working a bar, nightclub, or lounge, we were having a hard time filling those details because, as you know, as we've talked ad nauseam, as you guys have talked ad nauseam as a board, at 3:00 AM, it's chaos, right, at some of these places? And now, we're expecting an on-duty detail officer who's making $40 an hour to try to intervene with people who have consumed way too much alcohol. So what we were looking at doing is increasing that hourly rate to $60 an hour for the officer, and then during the months of spring break, so March 1st through April 30th, and by Toberfest, officers working those outside details for those venues will then be paid $80 an hour. So regular details is going to remain $40 an hour to the officer. Bars, nightclubs, and lounges will be $60 per hour. And then during those high-volume event times, spring break, et cetera, they'll make $80 an hour. And then what we also did was, you know, the main part, those were just tiers of what we also looked at. So what we looked at was the hourly rate in the surrounding areas of what other police officers make in surrounding areas. And with Mr. Scudero and the CFPBA, they sent us a letter saying, here's what we think it ought to be. And they gave out an offer of $3 per hour. So we looked at that, we looked to see what everybody had recently done, because as you know, we just signed the collective bargaining agreement in October for a two-year deal that gave 3.4 and 3.4, 3%, and 4%, 3%, and 4%. And everybody thought that was a really good deal. But as soon as Daytona Beach's ink was dry on the contract, all the surrounding areas went, oh yeah, here's what we're going to do. And then they raised their rates. So this is kind of unprecedented, certainly in my career. I've never really opened up a collective bargaining agreement to renegotiate raises, but as you guys recognize, that was an issue. We were 40 vacancies, with others kind of looking around going, hey, why am I going to stay in Daytona Beach when I can make just as much, if not more, working for a less busy city, less issues to deal with? So we did a cost analysis, and we came up with the $3 an hour as being within the realm of kind of meeting the challenge. We want to be the lead dog. We want to be the standard, like, Daytona Beach is the standard. They got the best chief, we got the best officers, we need to pay the best. And that's what we heard loud and clear. So what we did was cost it out, giving everybody a $3 per hour increase for our police. And what that's basically going to do is, right now, our starting pay for police officers right now is $20.58 an hour, effective July 3rd, assuming ratification by the unions, which they're going to ratify, will be $23.58 an hour. And then with the collective bargaining agreement that's already in place, those officers will get, or the ranges will get a 3% range, the officers get it as well. But our new starting pay on October 1st will be $50,537 as the base rate of pay. So that's what we did for them, again, with changing the outside detail rates and with changing the retirement back. It's a solid plan that's going to keep the officers here and allow the chief and his crew to go out and recruit talented people. Right now, like the chief said, he could literally step onto any university, anybody's in a criminal justice degree and say, you can make $50,000 as a base rate of pay to come be a police officer here. Well, we even helped put you in the academy. And a lot of people with college degrees going out don't find jobs like that, making that kind of money. So he was able to do that. And then what we also did is, as we were looking at the police officers, we started looking at the firefighters, just to see where they are in local jurisdictions. And what had happened recently is that a couple of jurisdictions went to nearly 15. I think one went to 15, and one went to 1481 per hour. And we were at 1346. So what we did was figure out a plan that we could afford in this year's budget to bring everybody up $1.54 per hour. That'll make the minimum rate of pay go from 1346 to $15 an hour on July 3rd. And then by October, our minimum pay for firefighters will be 1545. But I can tell you this, our lowest paid firefighter right now is at $14 an hour. Even though the minimum's 1346, our lowest paid right now is 14. So giving them a buck 54 is going to make our lowest paid firefighter at 1554. Then they're going to get the 3% and the 4% next year. So that'll keep them above everybody else as we're moving through. The 20 to 25-year pension applies to them as well. So that's some of the things that we did to look at trying to meet your challenge. And just to be clear, the $3 an hour and the buck 54 an hour within their respective departments applies to everybody except the chiefs, all the way through deputy chief. Everybody's getting that raise. So that was the cost analysis. So that's, because basically, as you know what happens, if I give an officer $3 an hour, the sergeant's like, hey, they're compressing me as ranks. Over the past several years, we've been addressing compression within the seniority, right? Within the classification of police officer, within the classification of sergeant, within the classification of lieutenant, fixing that and trying to get the separation between their years of service. When I give everybody $3 an hour, if I just did the officers, your promotion to sergeant is barely $3 an hour. So we had to take it to sergeant. And then what happens? We got to take it to lieutenant. And then what happens? My captains are already making less than some of the lieutenants, and then, of course, all the way up to the deputy chief. So that's what we did to respond to the challenge. I believe all the unions are going to ratify without question as soon as the memorandum of agreement hits their desks, probably tomorrow, possibly Friday. And then they'll ratify, and then on the July 6th meeting, you guys will do a final ratification, assuming you tell me to go forward tonight. I mean.
So the chiefs want to speak there, because they've talked to their personnel and also Mike. So I know Drew just tells his people that, hey, you just got a bonus. But come on, Drew.
Good evening, Jakari Young, Chief of Police. As it's already been stated, tomorrow would have been the 90-day deadline for the challenge that you issued in order to come back with some initiatives and incentives as far as our salary and anything else that could increase staffing. So I think this is probably the first time I've stood up here as the chief with a smile on my face. Because usually when I'm up here, I'm responding to a special event or something serious that's happened in the community. So last Friday, I called a meeting of all on-duty resources, and I invited the manager to the meeting. And Mr. Scudero, who represents CFPBA, was also in attendance at that meeting. And when I told them what the city was getting ready to propose, it was perfect timing, because that Friday was the beginning of the truck meet for us. So I had to, again, bring people in on their days off to make sure we had appropriate staffing for whatever the truck meet looked like for us, even though they moved it to South Florida. So that was the first time that they left a briefing where everybody was extremely excited, upbeat, and optimistic, just based on what was proposed and what was said in that meeting. So I just simply want to say thank you for recognizing the issue and for your willingness to correct this issue, because it truly, it's truly needed. And I have over 200 police officers right now that are very excited and optimistic about the future of this police department. So on behalf of all police officers currently working for the city of Daytona Beach, we thank you.
And before, thank you, Chief. Appreciate you and Mike, and before Drew comes up, I spoke with the president or representative for the Fire Department Union. I believe in having good working relationships, and I put him on a timeline. And he came back and gave me his number, and I made a commitment to him. We were not talking about it, that the number he gave, he'll probably refine it more now that he knows that y'all are in the refining business. But I made a promise to him that I'm going to try to do for him what he thinks is best, working with the fire chief, to get our agency more up, a little bit more. So I made that commitment to him, and I appreciate him that he has not tried to do anything but to give me the opportunity to work with the chief and work with HR to make sure that the numbers that they are evaluating as firefighters, that they get the best also here in our agency. And we're going to bring that back to you all in the future, because it is something that I want to make sure that not only public safety, and they heard this, Mike Scudero has heard it a couple times, but it's not only about public safety for me, it's also about making sure that all employees, whether you're the janitor as well, get what's due for you to make our city be the destination of choice for anybody wanting to get a job. So go ahead, Chief.
Drew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief. As a career-long hose-dragger, we support our law enforcement members. What they do on the streets of Daytona is incredible, and we're right alongside of them. So it was a great opportunity to evaluate where the fire department stood based on other agencies within the county. The feedback that we've been receiving from the personnel is tremendous. What they like about it is, one, it wasn't on anyone's radar, and the fact that there's people that are considerate and thoughtful of where they stand in society or comparatively to other agencies, it took them by surprise. And some of the conversations we've been having is, we've made great headway through Jim Sexton's efforts, this board's efforts, the manager's efforts over the years, and this is just another sign that the city continues to think about public safety and put us in the right position. We have other needs different than the police department. So I know that we've been having conversations about infrastructure and personnel, but it's just tremendous, and I know they're very thankful for this opportunity. I'm also confident that they're going to ratify this. And it's a great day in Daytona Beach to be a member of public safety, so we thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager. I'll be brief. Mike Scudero, Coastal Florida PBA Executive Director, 810 Fentress Court. I'm just here to say thank you. I think you've heard from these gentlemen a lot here that sums it all up. This was one heck of a 90 days, and it was a very important opportunity to make sure this department is, number one, both in salary, in work effort, in productivity, the whole nine yards. And this is proof of what collaborative work looks like. You know, a lot of cities, unions, and management just don't get along. And certainly, Mr. Sexton, Chief Young and I, we do have differences, but on this, this was teamwork. And I'm proud to have gotten it done with these gentlemen. It was not easy, but we got here. And, Mr. Manager, it's been great getting to know you, too. Seems like we meet a lot more often, and I'm okay with that, because it's working. And this is a great example of that. So thank you all, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
And for the record, the public hearing and final action on this item is July 6. And that was our final item on the agenda.
All right, we'll commence our commission.
We'll commence our commission comments with Commissioner of Zone 4, Commissioner Stacy Kent, too.
And I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Commissioner of Zone 5, Commissioner Danette Henry.
Good afternoon. I said make it quick. And really, I really only have just one thing that I want to talk about. And that is that in our neighborhood watch, some of our residents from Madison Heights area came out to speak and address some of their concerns. And I was glad to have gotten the opportunity to talk, talk to them. And I know that in the beginning, City Manager, you and I had started, we talked about pocket, a pocket park in Madison Heights. We talked about a pocket park and we also talked about the old PI club right there, whether or not we could purchase that or what we could do to bring a park to that community. And they are absolutely right, they do need a park. And we have been talking about that for a while now. Their children would have to cross Mason in order to get to a park. And so they would either have to cross Mason or they would have to cross Clyde Morris. So if you could come back to me or get staff to come back to us on whether or not there is space out there for that pocket park, what we can do to get a pocket park out there as well. That was one of their concerns. And the other concern, of course, was sidewalks. And I know that we've had sidewalk conversations before with regards to Madison Heights. And I don't know if they, because it is an older neighborhood, if they have the space with the requirements and the space requirements to put some sidewalks out there. But they do absolutely, on some of those outer streets coming from Mason and coming from Clyde Morris, needs some type of sidewalk. So if we can just get someone out there to look at that and start getting some ideas about what we can do to alleviate some of that and get back with me on that. And those were their two biggest concerns. And those were things that you and I had already started talking about early last year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Paula Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can just go to the neighborhood watch since you just brought that up. I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for joining us in the Zone 6 Neighborhood Watch, which is on the second Mondays at 6:30 PM at the, the Midtown Center. So for those that reside in Zone 6, there is a Neighborhood Watch meeting for you. And Mr. Miller is doing an excellent job of bringing in folks to make sure that we understand what's happening in our city and for us to have an opportunity to speak with individuals who we may not necessarily have an opportunity to speak to. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being the speaker this week. Summer concerts, the second Saturday in, of every month through September, the Midtown Summer Concerts are at the Daisy Stocking Park from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. And yes, it drizzled a little bit this past Saturday. And I think that's what's going on right here. But we were still there. I was the emcee. We were still there. And people sat in their cars and honked their horns and the band was, was very good. It was excellent. I did see in our notes, however, because Daisy's going to be under construction, that I believe it's the last meeting will be at the Cypress, Cypress Park where they were previously. And then lastly, you know, we, we bring this new dude to town and he has all these ideas and everything, you know, and you want to see them to come to fruition, the new dude being the city manager, you all. And so today we had Rec Fun on the Run. You know, I changed the name, Sun and the Fun, Fun and the Sun. But it's Rec Fun on the Run. This idea came with our city manager where we're going to be taking our leisure services, our recreational department, out to various areas in the city and bringing it to the youth there. So today we had hot dogs and they were running around and playing and, and bursting balloons and little, they had little, oh, they were so proud to show me their little junior police little shields and everything. And I had me a couple of little friends, I sent pictures back to the city, a couple of little guys that I met that were three and two, they had to show me their fingers. But it was really nice. It was at Daytona Gardens, as we know, Soul City. But they were very appreciative. The parents were there, the kids were there, the management staff was there and they gave away bicycles. They gave away like 10 bikes today. The kids drew numbers and had their names and they pulled their names. So they said, we hope we're not raining on your parade. No, you're adding to our parade because we didn't bring bicycles, we brought hot dogs. But it was a great day and I know there's going to be a rotation of that to various parks and various zones. So it was just a great day today. So I thank you, Mr. Manager, for that idea and seeing it come to fruition. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add, I want to remind everyone that on July 4th is our 4th of July parade that's coming. What time is it going to be, Stacy?
9 o'clock, the ceremony at the boardwalk.
9.
And then the parade starts at 10 o'clock.
And also, we're having three movie nights coming to Zone 5. So we're going to have a movie night tentative, tentatively, we're planning for a movie night at Strickland Range Park in Madison Heights, Living Faith, and possibly Suburbia Estates, just to bring some summer fun to that area.
Great job.
Thank you.
Great, great. Yes, Commissioner Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to talk about a couple of things that are not very popular. Talk about the homeless situation. I have people that come to me in my, in my zone and don't like the homeless in their neighborhood. And my response is, we probably need to do something to provide some more services or we don't want to spend the money. I said, well, have you got any ideas how to, how to deal with it? Well, no. And I said, well, let's go to the extreme, hypothetical extreme. Would you be okay if we just euthanize the poor and the homeless? Oh, no, we don't want to do that. Well, guess what? We need to come together in the middle there somehow or another and figure out something to deal with it because we have an abundance of those people. And we're going to continue to have an abundance of those people because if you watch national news, fake news, whatever you want to call it, a lot of people are losing their homes because hedge funds, investment groups are buying up rental properties, raising the rents, and people don't have anywhere to go. People are moving out in their cars according to the fake news, the national news. And I talked to the chief this morning and I said, have you guys been running into people sleeping in their cars, families and stuff? And he said, you know, one of the other commissioners, I think it was Ms. May, he said she had sent him a picture of some people sleeping in their car at Thune Point Park. If we continue down this road with rents going higher, people with nowhere to live except in their cars, we're going to start to have that here. Daytona Beach is not going to be exempt from what goes on in big cities. We're going to end up with people living in their cars because they can't afford to live somewhere. I would like to see us begin to think about this and come up with a plan of some sort rather than waiting till we're crisis mode and go, hey, we got people all over town sleeping in their cars with their kids and stuff. Let's try to give it some thought if, if y'all have the urge or would like to come up with some ideas before we have our next meeting or in a couple of meetings. And let's, let's see if we can't get a plan and head that off at the pass rather than scrambling whenever it's already crisis mode going forward. Because I think it's coming. Lots of people are losing their, their, their places to live because rents are going up. I know we're working hard to try to get some affordable housing, but I bet we get a crush of homeless people before, families before we get affordable housing worked out. And I'm all for affordable housing, don't get me wrong. But I'd like to see us just kind of start thinking about that and, and come up with some ideas before it's a crisis mode. And, thank you.
Thank you.
Piggyback on what Commissioner Strickland just said. And part of the way that we combat that is making sure that we have ordinances that limit whether or not hedge funds can come in and buy 500, 600 houses at a time. And I know we don't have that amount of housing right now, but that is the issue that is all over the country right now. And people are scrambling and municipalities are scrambling to try and combat those hedge funds that are literally wiping, not even affordable housing. And I saw the other day that the zero to $250,000 houses are completely just about all over the country wiped out by hedge, hedge funds. And the 250 to $500,000 houses are get, are almost at that point. And they were talking about, economists were talking about how it is going to be nearly impossible for your children's children to be able to purchase homes affordably at the rate that the hedge funds are. And you know, it happens in Orlando. They're, they're buying 1,000 houses and they're turning it completely into Airbnbs. They're turning it into, completely into rental properties. And it is not going to be long before something like that gets to our community and our neighborhood. And you are exactly right in, in sitting on that Affordable Housing Committee. I know Commissioner May, thank you Commissioner May for always stepping in, I meant to say that. But I know she can tell you that it's, it's only going to get worse from here. And, and he is exactly right. So we do have to start coming up with creative ways that we can counter that we're not, sadly enough, it's going to be hard to counter rent increases because they're going to send that down from Tallahassee that eventually that, you know, you won't be able to cap or, or, or there won't be much that you'll be able to do. I think that's greed, but, yeah, well, yeah. What they're going to make it, they're going to make additional laws about it. Additional laws will be coming down with regards to that. Where even if you, cities that try to do certain things, they, they will be punished. Cities will be, the municipalities will be punished for certain things. So I'm glad you brought that up, Ken, because that was something that I did want to eventually talk about and maybe even have more workshops on because it's on the way. Rent is going up 35% in Florida and, and down south, almost as much as 50%. So the wave is only going to, and, and they have the option of only giving people a 15 day window to come up with an additional $1,200, $1,300 for, for their additional rent. So that is just something that I think that we should definitely be on the lookout for and definitely plan for. Thank you.
Commissioner May?
Off with that. So as I walk my neighborhoods, I'm hearing more people tell me that their family members are having to move in with them a little bit, their kids or married couples are having to move in with grandparents in some of my communities on beachside as well, as also in my midtown areas, just a thought. So thank you for bringing that up. So the past week or so, two weeks, I guess, we had a really nice event. I'm just giving you a quick update. The Filipinos in America Association had an event at the Midtown Cultural Center, well attended, first time event, they'll most likely do it again. But it was great to see young families out there utilizing the Midtown Cultural Center. And I suspect they'll be at even more events, but really well run, well organized, cultural dancing, which I loved. All of that was on Sunday. Saturday, Deliverance Church as well as Allen Chapel, both had events. I went to both, they were great. One was a health fair and the other one dealt with kids, juniors, and teens and some events for youth. Really nice two or three day event. Also, they've been doing bingo, I've become quite the bingo person at various senior facilities in the downtown core. And I have quite a few of them. And so I really appreciate them doing that. I will say, as I walk the neighborhoods, the basic requests that I'm getting, and thank you for addressing the increase to our firefighters and our police force, is that they would like to see more visibility of police officers just walking the neighborhoods or just driving through areas, even if it's on the way somewhere, which of course they have to do. But they just get, the residents on both, throughout Zone 3 are telling me that if they could just see more police officers, it would make a difference to some activities that are going on, right? So I appreciate that. Sauté Kings in Zone 6, they were on the Great Food Truck Rally, I was watching them this week. They did really well, so it's really nice to see they want TV, pretty well known, so it was kind of nice. I'll be at the Juneteenth event as well. I like the, the parking lot resurfacing that we share along MMV, the Joe Harris Park back there. I thought it looked fantastic. So thank you so much for doing that. Those back lots needed it. I will also say that, so I don't know if you remember, but a few years back, I started going on about the cats, feral cats, right? To the end of the feral cats, I ended up getting a little ordinance, we agreed on, to enclose garbage cans because that would help the feeding of the cats. All right. It was also about reducing trash into the rivers. That was another thing there. The cat situation never stopped. It never decreased, decreased a little bit, but now it's back on the rise again. So I spoke with a woman who has, I want to get it right, I think it's called the furry nation. And she has an entire program. It's one person working by herself with volunteers. She's actually with the fire department. This is something she also does. And she is pretty committed to the process. She's a nonprofit. And I appreciate the work she's doing because I actually have someone I can refer to now and say, look, this is what's going on and this is who you can contact. She has TNR programs set up, she has traps she can give to people. She has a situation where she'll train you and teach you on how to deal with colonies. I've had a situation where I have seniors with 30 cats on their property. And I went to visit them and they really, they really need some help. I have that in more than one area right now. But it promotes raccoons and more rodents. So I would very much, at some point, I'm going to have her, I'm going to invite her and I would love to support her organization at some point in the, in the future. She has a whole website and she can, she helps the resident help other people to help manage the feral cat population that we have going on. But it's becoming a bit of a problem, especially for my seniors. So thank you so very much and really good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, Commissioner, Commissioner May. So you, you dropped this on us about furry nation, but you didn't give us any contact information.
If the city is kind enough, if I have a whole, I really want to create a contact sheet because she has an entire contact sheet with web links for all the different people she works with. She's the central point. What I really like is you can adopt the kittens. She puts it out on Facebook and then people contact her. But it's, and if we can't do anything about it, then we have to find all of these outside resources who are already doing it and just promote what they're doing. And so I would like to give the information to City Manager and we can put on our website, forward it to people and say, here's the resource sheet that you need. It's very well done, though.
I look forward to that.
Okay. A large part of what we do is promote good things, good projects. And Ms. Goodman, if you're listening, when we have our meeting tomorrow, there is a group that's having a summer youth learn and earn program. Again, a summer youth learn and earn program. So it is a summer youth program where the kids work and get paid, which is something that I wanted that we did a few years ago. And they are doing this program here, but they don't have any space. So Mr. Sandcrab, I mean, Mr. Willis, if you're listening, you and Betty, maybe you guys can think about some space. I think the time is between 10 and 2. And I will add that to our, Ms. Goodman and I's agenda for tomorrow. But I think it's the ideal type of thing that we have to be doing, but we, we don't always have to do it. What we have to do is find ways to support the people in our community who are doing it. And, and, and the thing that I, when I went to the mayor's conference last week, that was probably the, one of the biggest takeaways that, of the discussions that we had. Because we talked a lot about the ARCA funds. And one of the biggest ways that communities have used that, those funds, is through supporting those sorts of programs that are in your community so that you can give them the strength to do their work. The top thing that we talked about was this issue of equity in America. And what I want to challenge and ask the city manager to do is to come back and give us a sort of a report of how we have used our funds to level the playing field in our community. We, I think that they, they had a, a book that outlined maybe 15 or 20 programs or cities as the, as it relates to how they use COVID funds to create a more equitable community. And I read about seven or eight of them. And many of the ideas that I saw in the And many of the ideas that I saw in the program, we've done things similar. And so I have been extremely proud of the way that we have executed the program thus far. Even go down to, when you think about the issue of equity, and I thought about this last night, you know, each time I cross that bridge and that phone goes out, that's not equity. That may be a more affluent area of the community, but it's not equity. You know? And so it, but it, and it's not equity, but to help solve that problem is a way of working towards equity. So I would like some sort of report so that I can, in my own mind, begin to see if we've done as well as I think we have. But when I look at the projects that you all are supporting, it's been about equity. And so one of the things that they talked about and one of the things that they used a lot of these funds is, is society, and we're gonna have a big problem with housing. And that was the second thing that they used, a lot of the funds is related to helping to close that gap because the gap is not going to get narrow. And we don't have a lot of resources at our disposal to help close that gap. So that was the second thing that they talked about. And then the third thing, and all of the things that you all have mentioned today, we've mentioned tonight and we were addressing. So we're on point about what we're supposed to be doing at this particular time. But the third thing that that I had down that they talked about was this issue of the inability to hire and retain police. It's not a Daytona Beach problem alone. It's a national problem. And I'm very proud of the commission and of staff for coming up with a policy. And someone had asked me a while back, well, what are you gonna do if they don't get it done? I did have a plan. But we don't have to do that. You know, that would have been us. They did their, they did their job. And I hope it empowers you, and I know it will. But I want us all to realize that it's not gonna make police work easier. It's not gonna make it just go away. So we all, as a community, have to start to do things to help make their work easier. And by that, I mean help reduce crime. There's just things and projects that we're gonna have to do as a city to help reduce that so that, you know, people will want to be police officers again. You know, there was a time growing up, you know, people told their children to be police officers. But that's, that's not happening as much now. And we want to get back to the policeman as a, as a heroic figure in the community. And, you know, certainly we want to pay them like that, but we as a society want to, you know, respect the daunting tasks that they have. So that was, that was a major part of it. And it was, it was something that we talked ad nauseam about and listened to a lot of different strategies as to how to address it. And then, yes, ma'am.
Curious, just from your experience with that, did they give you any ideas on what little communities or streets could do to help themselves? Did they give, they discuss any strategies at all that the community could actually engage in at your meeting?
Well, they didn't. They gave strategies in their community, but what you have to do, in my mind, and I, I came away with these sort of strategies. And I talked about this at a, a community group over on the beachside last night, the Seabreeze Community Group. We have to execute and implement programs like midnight basketball. And they have to partner with employment opportunities. And so what we have to do is we have to take young men and women, put them in settings that they are comfortable in, which is playing basketball and, you know, doing things that they want to do. But then we have to teach them about the opportunities that are in our community at Daytona State where they can not get retrained, but trained to fulfill some of the jobs that we have. So a lot of it comes down to two things. Us creating an environment that is entisive, enticing, and that, that embraces people, I call it 16 to 40. Because we have not done an adequate job of embracing them and communicating with them and attracting them to us. So we have to go out and attract them, talk to them, engage with them, and then show them how they can live the American dream. Now, that American dream, as we know, and we're talking tonight, might not include a house right now. But if it includes better wages, better jobs, that will help them to be more connected to our community. And so, you know, I, I, I thought that it would be things like that and many others. But we have to sit down and figure it out and we have to be thinking about, you know, what it is that we want to implement is going to make our community better. So those were three things that I think that moving forward that we need to continue to be laser focused on because it's not going to get better in terms of housing and, and even in terms of the, for it to be easy to hire police and all the other issues that come with equity. Do we have any other remarks?
I'd like to know about the modification on our ring program. I understand maybe the age has changed now, and and I think the citizens need to know that. I'm gonna throw away the old flyers that I have that say 65. And, and can you speak to that, Mr. Manager?
Yeah. Okay. We, it, it really, it's opened up throughout the entire city. We are, I'll be sending tomorrow an update on what numbers have been, applications have been received throughout your different zones. We were really focusing on crime areas and the police department was looking at some, some of the data because that's what we're gonna go through. But really, it's just really open to the entire city, all different zones. And we'll give you the updated numbers tomorrow on what we have. Captain Williams is at the police department, it's the one that's leading the charge. The key thing we're gonna have to deal with is residents being willing to come through the training and make sure they have access to Wi-Fi. It's no need for us to put a ring doorbell on someone's house that's just gonna look the part, but it's not gonna do what it is supposed to. So that's gonna be the key of communicating. Some of the people who have submitted applications, they were, they were thinking that it was just gonna automatically, so Wi-Fi type thing. So that's what we're dealing with right now. But the updated information will be sent to you all electronically and we'll, we'll be updating the information on our websites as well.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned Wi-Fi. Because the federal government has, has issued a lot of money related to issues of infrastructure and Wi-Fi. And I don't know if you have a person on staff who is assigned, you know, I have some contact information that we can discuss or some things that I got from the conference. But we should have a person who is assigned to helping us to make Wi-Fi more accessible to everybody in the community. Do you have a person?
Yes. We, we actually have a very good, our chief information officer has worked at NASCAR, works with here, Hassan, has degrees focusing on broadband, and he has a proposal to bring to make sure we provide Wi-Fi in all of our facilities, broadband, high speed internet. So I'll, one day I'll have him come do a presentation.
Okay. And then I will want to talk with him about, or you, with you about how we can make certain that he is studying how the federal government, how we can help to make sure that residents have Wi-Fi. Because that's, that's the issue that, that's one of the issues of equity. Because if you're divided from the, from, from di, from digital access, you are disconnected. And we have a lot of people in Daytona Beach who don't have access and they're waiting for us to help.
And it's, you say that, so I'm, I'm adding to the discussion. To have a digital divide in the 32114 ZIP code where all of our colleges and universities are located is problematic. It shouldn't happen. So when you think about that, a major technology, aerospace university, a great state college, a great historical black college, a business college in Kaiser and medical schools, we, we, I don't understand how we on that corridor could have that big of a digital divide, but they are there. So we, that's, I will definitely get with Hassan and make that part of the study because it is critical.
So a few weeks back, I was speaking to the manager and I said, I had somebody approach me from a major company saying that they would like to work with us with regard to providing 5G, particularly in the 32114 area code. And so I'm not sure if I sent that information, but I actually had that conversation and they are really interested in working with us specifically in the 32114 ZIP code. So I'll forward that on. We had a verbal conversation, but I'll send that on. So it's interesting, we're bringing it up.
Okay. Very good. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Since you're all talking about Wi-Fi and all this.
She wants her tower.
The tower. I know it's out for an RFP. How long do you think?
I, I don't know if it's a 30 day or, or 60 day. Well, remember, we, we are, remember, our calls fall too because I.
Oh, yeah, yours too. You're in my zone. So what do you think?
I, I don't know if it was a 30 day or, or 60 day, but I'll, I'll check and follow up.
You'll find out for me. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. I just have three things. I did, I just looked out there and saw Tener Dean, who is the fire union rep, he's been meeting with me, actually, he, he calls me, makes sure he'll sit behind my car. But thank you for the conversations of trying to make sure we keep a positive relationship with the fire department as well. As he stated, Tyler Robinson is here. Tyler Robinson has been working with me and shadowing me, a very brilliant young man who will be traveling to Tallahassee on Sunday to attend Florida American Legion Boy's Day. One of the things as we get ready to move into our, our retreat and our efficiency committee that will happen starting in October, Tyler's been working on a survey to go out to all of the residents of Daytona Beach that we're gonna send out. And so he's got some very good ideas of what type of questions we should add. So I, I've been very pleased with him. I've, I haven't told him, staff has been very appreciative of him because he is looking at some reports. The mayor is a little upset with him because he, he's cut, cut some of the mayor's projects. And I tried to, I've been trying to explain to him how politics works. He was telling, sitting in meetings with commissioners, talking about he doesn't agree with a project. I said, no, you need to ask them their thoughts so you can find out what they agree with first. And then you explain how you cut their funding off. But it's been, it, it really has been quite interesting for him to, to be able to work with all of you all as well to talk about something. But he's learning a lot. I appreciate you and hopefully you'll do very well up in Tallahassee and then come back and offer some support for us. Ken has something.
He just told me you're not paying him. Sounds like you're working him pretty hard for free.
Yeah, I mean, it's good. He, his computer screen is bigger than everybody else's, so it's, it's, it's good. And you know, when you've got, you know, attorney for a father and, and a, you know, payroll personnel people for moms, you just do, do well. He's got it all packed. I do want to say that I had the opportunity to represent the, the city of Daytona Beach. Most people don't know that I was over code enforcement. Our code officers learned that at the Florida Association of Code Enforcement's conference in Orlando, where 350 code officers from all over the state of Florida were in attendance. And I was the keynote speaker for their conference. And my, my theme, my discussion was the value of code compliance in your community and how it can be an economic engine for the cities that you work with. So had that experience to work with them. And also did a training for all city managers in the state of Florida on diversity, equity and inclusion. So when you said that, that is something that I definitely am concerned about and will be bringing back. So we, we are doing some great things here. The Nexus Study, you all should have had the Nexus Study. We put it all in your mailbox. We're gonna have a presentation coming back to you all. You've received it now. I'm gonna try to get us to scan it and put it on our website for the citizens to see. And we're gonna bring in the, the person. It is a, it is a, it's a good read, but he has laid out our next steps as a city and staff agrees with that and hopefully the commissioners agree as well. We have not been able to secure a retreat date, so I'm gonna send you all two dates. Tomorrow in an email for the majority of the dates. If I have to call you, I'll call you to try to get it, get a date. And so we need to go ahead and schedule that because we want to be able to send that.
Too late.
Yeah. We want to be able to send that out because it helps us with our capital projects. And then there's, so some of you all have, have responded to the survey, so I don't, I'm not gonna say who has or who has not. Because look, Commissioner Cantu, she giving me the eye. But it's just a matter of, it's a matter of everybody has too many dates. So we want to do that and get it to you all to have it. But, but that, that will take place real soon. And that's all I have for my comments.
All right. All right. This concludes the regularly scheduled portion as it relates to our business. We will now hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay. Our first speaker is William Bidoroff and on deck is Carmen Clark.
My name is William Bidorff. I live at 402 East ISP. Why I was coming here today, I, I really believe in fairness. When I opened my business years ago and I started paying my employees to work for me, I had to make sure that they could work on a living wage. And I think that's very important, just like the police officers. Most police officers I know had to work multiple jobs. Now, it's nice that the city of Daytona Beach is making sure that they get paid fairly. Something came to my attention. A young lady that lives in back of me stated that all the city commissioners make $77,431 a year. I, I did some public record research and it's a lot less than that. Okay? So here's, here's what I worry about. I'm not gonna be the favorite in my neighborhood asking to, for an increase for my commissioners. The reason why I'm asking for this, I went to, I go to several meetings all over the city because I care what happens to my city. And a lot of my commissioners are there. And gas is very expensive. So what I, what I'm asking for is for you to be, you all to be treated fairly, just with a slight increase so you could pay for your gas or something of that nature. Because I would ask for the same thing. I'm also has a security business. If I work for someone and I have to drive to Orlando and back, it's gonna cost me about $200. So I'm only asking for a slight increase for my commissioners so they don't have to depend on special interest groups or anything like that. My commissioners can make a fair wage so they can buy gas and pay their electric bills. That's it.
We don't get money from special interest groups.
I know you don't, but I don't, I, 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 I know you don't, but what I want to do is make sure that my commissioners are treated fairly. It's just like if, if I show up to fix your roof and you say, well, you know what, I'm gonna give you $50 a day to work on a roof, I'm gonna look like, well, I guess I'm not gonna do your roof. You know, let's be fair, because I, I can't afford to drive there and do the roof and insurance and everything to get down the road. I wouldn't be able to afford to pay my truck payment to come there and go to work. You know, it's only what's fair. Because right now, my commissioners are fighting what's fair for my police officers and my firemen.
Well, you see if you can get 10 people to agree with you.
I'm gonna try, but I might get a lot of black eyes, but, but, but you understand what I'm saying is the, just the expense is something to think about in, in the near future.
Listen, I just, I'm just asking you just point blank because I, I have my own sentiments about it, but if you can get 10 people, just get 10 people that, that agree with you and then maybe we can talk about it.
And, and see, the second thing, you, just for the record, you don't make 70. According to Google.
We know. It's okay.
It's 77,000.
Yeah. Is, is that on Google?
It says Daytona.
Oh, okay.
That says Daytona?
How much does, how much does a city commissioner make?
In Daytona Beach, Florida, the average commissioner salary in Daytona Beach, Florida is 77,400.
Your time's up. Okay, your time's up, but, but I'll, I'll talk to you if you get 10 people.
Protect, protect this man. Protect this man at all costs. Where's the chief? Protect this man at all costs.
And Ms. Clark, she's getting the microphone for you. Is it on? Kim, is it on? Kim, it's not on. I don't think it's on. Is it on?
Okay. Good evening again. Most of you may think it's irrelevant and some of you may think it's relevant, but I am a disability advocate by profession. And most of the time that you will see me at meetings, it's in regards to individuals with disabilities and concerns. I do have a question in regards to the ring doorbell. Do you have to own your home in order to have the ring doorbell? You can live in an apartment and pay rent? Okay. All right. And also in regards to Wi-Fi, the reason why we do have a lot of issues with people not having Wi-Fi because it's not affordable for them. Because we only have one person that's dominating Wi-Fi, you know, that is the person that carries the Wi-Fi service. Also, Juneteenth is already here, but next year. Also, Juneteenth is already here, but next year, I would like to be on the committee because June, where's Juneteenth is located, it is not accessible. I had surveyed it the other day. I went out there. If you're on a scooter, wheelchair, walker, person who's individual impaired, visually impaired, it is impossible for you to be able to enjoy Juneteenth. Okay? It's on the grass. It's not accessible for people with disabilities, unfortunately. It's already in process. Unfortunately, I won't be able to enjoy it because I'm on a scooter right now for my life, you know? So also, Commissioner Reed, you said the concerts are going to be changed over to Cypress Park?
Just that last one, because Daisy Stocking is going to be under construction.
Okay, all right.
And Carmen, Ms. Clark, for the record, we don't do Juneteenth. We support it, but we don't organize Juneteenth.
Okay, well, I'm just, okay, I'm just putting that out in the atmosphere. Thank you for correcting me.
If they didn't, we'll make sure they do.
Okay, well, I was trying to reach out to whomever. I never got a response back, so I didn't know where I could bring it up. But also in regards to rent, I really appreciate you all talking about that because I did want to bring that up, but I see my seconds are coming down. But I wanted to talk about the cap on rent. But unfortunately, I won't be able to because it'll take a little bit more time. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
Our next speaker is Sophia Dallas, and on deck is John Nicholson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners. My name is Sophia Dallas. I live at 1305 Laurel Drive, Daytona Beach, Florida. I am the CEO, founder of Sisters Supporting Sisters, which is a breast cancer advocacy organization. Established this after getting breast cancer myself. I'm in remission at this point in time. But through my process, I saw that many women in our community needed assistance. They needed a mentor, they needed someone to guide them through the process. October 1st, I am going to be holding a gala at Midtown, which I know is going to be renamed. I did meet with Keith Willis last week, and we have secured the building. This is an expensive event. 300 people will be our capacity. We will be selling tickets through Eventbrite, but probably 90% of what we raised through the ticket funding will go to catering and decorating. It's expensive. Our, just our decor bill is $5,200. And that's not including paying for the cater, anything extra that you need. So Mr. Willis did suggest that I did come to the meeting this evening and to ask on behalf of my organization if you all could, because I don't know how this works, so I'm learning, is to donate to our October 1st gala so that we can officially make it establish and happen and be a yearly event. We do currently have Advent staff that does work with us. They volunteer their time. We have been going to the health fair. We were there this Saturday at Daytona Deliverance. We also have, we do outreach once a month at local churches. We went to Allen Chapel, Mother's Day. We were able to get about 15, we're at 15 women that we signed up for free mammograms through the Advent Healthcare System. And the benefit of going through Advent is that if anything positive comes from that screening, Advent gets you that Medicare Cancer Medicaid, and you're covered from beginning to end versus taking the $30 mammogram. So we're out here to educate women, because as some of you may or may not know, as definitely as of this year, the black woman is number one on the totem pole for breast cancer. The woman under 40, the black woman, it has the highest mortality rate. So we service all women, because this is not just a race thing. But we do focus on the inner city in this community to bring awareness about breast cancer. We also had people out this weekend that works with diabetes, which is an underlying health issue, also heart, skin cancer, and lung cancer. And we have been blessed to get volunteers from Advent Health Cancer Institute to volunteer their time to come with us to any event that we attend. We will be vendors and volunteers at the Pay It For next month, and I will be attending two more Empowerment events. I think I heard a beep, though.
Question, Ms. Dallas. Ms. Dallas, from the time that a woman gets diagnosed and she comes to you, what are some things that you do from the onset as far as your mentorship?
So what happens on the onset when she is diagnosed and receives that diagnosis? Believe me, that's the worst time of her life because the primary care doctor, the GYN, doesn't not have a soft hand with it. They just throw them to the oncologist. So what we do, the oncologist has our business cards at Advent Health, because that's who we're working with. They give it to the client if they want it. It's not a forced thing. We mentor them from the beginning. We go to their doctor's appointments with them. We go to that biopsy appointment with them. Whatever they need us with them by their side, we go. Because I was alone. I rung the bell by myself. I went to infusion by myself. You can't take anybody back with you when you get that infusion. You're getting a deadly toxic drug to save your life, and you may have a bad reaction, but you're there by yourself. And when you walk out, there's no one out there. But I'm sitting out there because I'm with you. And there's no deadline on the services. If they're, the week that they're going through chemo, we do make sure they have a case of water. We do have a chef that'll prep a meal for them for the week. These are free, and these are people that have, know that my passion is about it, and they're willing to do their services for free. So they just contact us. We try to do the community event so people know about it. But we also bring in the underlying health issues that affect in our community, not just breast cancer, but we're there with them from beginning to end. And it's usually through their doctors that we get in contact with the patients.
And it's primarily all of your funding, or primarily your funding through fundraising?
We're doing that. And to be honest with you, the primary funding, I'm a disabled veteran, and the primary funding has been my savings. So, but if you have a passion for something that you do with God, you're going to make it happen. And so I've been blessed thus far to be above water, but I can't keep doing that. I have 11-year-old special needs child, and I have a home to take care of too. But I look for help where I can get help. I don't look for a handout or a freebie. I just want help. I want help to broaden what we're doing. And breast cancer is very important, and men get breast cancer too. And so I'm a licensed mentor with Emmerman Angels, so that's what made me do it even more, because I want to help women. When I left Infusion one day, from when I first started, there were seven women, black women, in the lobby. They looked like the Grim Reaper were over their shoulders. Only one woman out of those seven had someone with her. You don't know how it feels to go to a man that's going to give you a death cocktail. You sit in front of those people and you get chemo. They have a mask on, you know, the regular mask like you're wearing, Ms. May. They have that facial on, they have a two-head bonnet. They have all this stuff on. You think you're going through a nuclear plant, but what they're giving you is nuclear. I'm still one year from post-chemo, but I'm still suffering the side effects of chemo. You see? But I live because I have faith. But I have to instill that faith and trust in someone else. And to have someone consistently to know that you're out there. There were no people in Advent, or even when I went to Halifax, there was no brochures to say that I was there to help them. Why? We have too many committees within the churches, but we got to come outside of that, and we got to be consistent. And I've been steadfast and consistent in going to churches, helping, and it's all my time. It's all Advent workers volunteering their time. And we just want to make a difference, but we want to make an impact.
Can you just make sure I have your number if you can leave it with...
Yes, I have a business card.
Okay, and I think she had a question.
I do. Ms. Dallas, how long has your organization been established?
I just established it December, because I can't wait it six months after chemo to make sure I was up and about. I'm a 501, so I am registered. And we do have a website, but I will give everyone a business card, so you can look it up. But we have been out trying to do our best, but it is costly. But I do the best that I can. Tabletop linen, we had a brunch at Allen Chapel. Tabletop linen donated the linen. You know why? Because that linen that goes on the table is 20 bucks a pop. Can you imagine? We've got to do 30 tables in October. That doesn't include the chair cover. It doesn't include the linen for this or that. So we're just trying to ask for some help. Tabletop is going to donate so much of it, and we just asking for a little help.
I have another question. Are you familiar with Sisters Alive?
Yes, I am.
Okay, because I don't know if you could do some partnering with them as well?
I'm alive, 365 days a year. We don't just wake up in October.
Oh, okay.
Okay? I don't mind partnering with anyone, but I want someone to be consistent.
And maybe your partnering would help them be consistent?
Yes, ma'am.
I would also be interested in your budget to know what it is you need money for.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am, I can give that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. SistersSupporting.com?
Sisters.
SistersSupporting.com. I'll give you a business card. It has all that on that and all the contact information. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry. These are some of my members that are here tonight. The others are at work. We have our one, Ms. Carmen came all the way from Orlando to support me tonight. So she comes to everything we have, and she drove all the way in from Orlando just to support me and stuff. So I appreciate everyone's time. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Grandview. One, I was going to ask, what was the Nexus Study? Is that the Affordable Housing Study? Okay, that was the first on my list. When was, when are we going to get the Affordable Housing Study? Number two, when are we going to rezone? All right, we're going to have a problem with the rezoning, all right? You do know that when you have your election, you will vote for somebody. Right now Stacy will have 7, 8,000 people in her zone that will not be able to vote for their new zone commissioner. All right? We're going to have somebody sitting on that zone for four years that they did not vote for. It is a problem. You guys knew it. It's been existing. If you look on your agenda, you just okayed almost 1,000 homes in that zone. So as soon as you rezone, within a year, your 10% will be over budget. You're going to have that problem consistently unless you address it. Years ago, I was the one that brought forward extending from 20 to 25 years the policeman. All right? You, I just talked to the county last week about the problem we're having with police officers, because they had somebody from their corrections office coming up saying they're short 80 people. We're short 40 people in police. What you've done tonight is you just forced 20% of the police department to retire. They must. See, that's the problem. When you correct one thing, you create another problem. He will lose 20% of his police force because of what you just did. That's what I was talking to the county about. These people will retire. I had a cousin, went to military at 17, retired at 37. He went to work for the city and retired again. And my mother got him a job at her city, and he retired a third time. He gets four checks. When these people retire from our police department, they're not going home to a rocker. They will go to another police department. Craig, he didn't retire. He went to another police department. That's what's going to happen. So we're going to find out, we've got to create a creative way, because this is what's going to happen. They will retire. We will force them out. The police, she just said, he's on the drop program. He must leave in five years. Must, mandatory. So we're creating our own problems when we force these people out of the police department. We've got to find a creative way of hiring Holly Hills police that retire or the county police that retire. We've got to replacing our... Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Kimberly Hoffpower.
South Fifth Street. Personal attacks on our residents will not be tolerated, Commissioner Reed. Carolyn James, that you appointed to that committee, gave no input at that meeting. I was there at the meeting along with John Nicholson. Only thing she asked was, "When are we going to have the next meeting?" That was all. It's your job to know your constituents and to do your work properly and not make excuses is unacceptable. I had a meeting with you once and you never showed up. You said, "Let's set up another meeting." That was two years ago, and you never did. So you need to be accountable to your constituents. You need to do your work that you're getting paid to do, and you need to be about the people's business. I'm encouraging everybody to come out and work out at Crunch, Daytona Beach.
That's where you look.
It's in the Daytona Mall. I am one of the founders. I opened the place up with them, and also I toned up.
Miss.
I'm looking beautiful. And I'm proud of my shelf, and I'm proud of the work that Crunch is doing in this community. Crunch of Daytona Beach on Nova Road, right there where Savalotti is right next door. It's called the Hit Zone. I'm going to encourage all of you to come out, especially you, Ms. Reed. You need to be there. You will be challenged, and you will not be defeated because they will make sure that that weight come off of you. I have a personal trainer, and he does, he leaves me feeling like I'm the best, my best self. So there in, I know I am. See, the mayor agrees with me, my friend, the mayor, Derrick Henry. I helped him get his job that he got. First election in the genesis, I made it happen. I make things happen. And also I want to commend Stacy Cantu, because she got our Veterans Museum back here in the city of Daytona. And we need that Veterans Museum here, because my son is a veteran, and my brother was a 28-year veteran, and my father, and my whole family. Plaza Cooper, we're all veterans serving this community. And I attended the event, and it was a huge success. Thank you, Stacy. We should have never let them get away from here. So she's coming in correcting some of the injustice that the last administration got rid of. They should have kept them right here in this city. So I'm glad to, that I was there to help celebrate that. I would also like to commend the city manager. I'm very, very proud of him. He's doing an outstanding job. He's successful. He's already three times.
Our next speaker is Kimberly Hoffpower, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Hoffpower. I'm at 508 Rybalt Avenue in Daytona Beach. I am here to invite everyone to an event that I'm super excited about. It is on Saturday, June 18th, 1 to 4. It is the Halifax Historical Society Museum. They have the honor and privilege of hosting the legendary Florida landscape artist, Mr. Al Black. Mr. Black has an amazing background as one of the Florida Highwaymen. He's one of two still living of the 26 of the Florida Highwaymen. And we will be getting him here in Daytona. A little on his background, he was, at age 14, he left home in 1945 to avoid working in the cotton fields. He found himself recruiting migrant workers and, in sales essentially. But he eventually crossed paths with that group of Florida Highwaymen artists, those black artists, and most of them were self-taught. But due to segregation, Jim Crow era, the artists were unable to gain gallery representation. But he began doing sales for this group and selling the paintings on the side of the road out of the back of the cars and going door to door. And meanwhile, as he's moving these paintings, they're chipping, they're having accidents, so he's learning to touch them up. And then he started helping and assisting these other... And then he started helping and assisting these other artists and finally learned that he also had the skill and was able to paint. And he is now, in 2004, was inducted into the Artist, the Florida Artist Hall of Fame. So this event will have an artist talk and paint. The painting will be then auctioned off and along with some other paintings by Mr. Black will be auctioned. The fee is $10. The proceeds will help fund the nonprofit organization Halifax Historical Society Museum. And it is our hope that as many as possible will attend the historic event and join us in acknowledging the artistic contributions and legacies of the black and African-American Floridians. And that's again, this Saturday, June 18th, 1 to 4, Halifax Historical Society Museum, 252 South Beach Street in our beautiful downtown Daytona Beach. I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is Brittany Presley.
Some of these acts are tough to follow. Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. As a reminder, I brought it up in a previous meeting that perhaps we should start the time clock after the name and address is read. We get our full three minutes. First of all, a couple, quick administrative, I wanted to welcome Tyler, but I see he's already left the room. I trust that he has a good pair of athletic shoes to keep up with our city manager. I know what it's like sometimes trying to chase him down and he is definitely Mr. Energy. I want to thank the city for taking prompt action on correcting the flag issue and compliance with the federal regulations. Thank you very much. I also want to suggest that we save Ms. Lamagra's vo, excellent speaking voice, by suspending the reading of public rules. Instead, let's just publish them in the lobby. No other city does this. We're all aware of it, those of us who come here. It's printed about 18 times and she has to read them every single meeting. I mean, I love hearing her, but it's repetitive. The other thing is I want to thank the city commissioner, Henry, for filling in at the Veterans Museum opening and education center. And it was great. I thank the city for supporting it. I just wish we'd get our flagpole painted. The other thing is, it would be nice to have some, some.
Everybody wants to take care of the flag.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, wait a minute. She's taking care of the flag.
Oh, great. I know, because I spoke to her and she is terrific about it. The other thing is lighting.
Say, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I already thanked her once. I'll thank her again. Anyway, I only got three minutes. The other thing.
Stop his time. I stopped his, I did stop your time.
Thank you.
We give you your time, man. We don't want to steal from you.
Anyway, and, anyway, it was a great event and it's really going to be a proud, a place for the city to share for our veterans. I would like to see a little bit better lighting so that our flag doesn't get stolen again. So it is very dark there. I don't know if the city can do something about that, but go by there at night.
The board is.
Okay.
Board is.
Okay.
You might want to talk to the president.
That whole stretch of that road is really dark. It's also dark down where I.
It's a sign of light.
Okay, great. Uh, where was I? Yeah, I was hoping the city manager would give me a report of the Martin Luther King tree out front. I know we discussed that previously, so I'm hoping that in the future he will let us know what the story is there because it's still ugly. Once again, I want to bring up, and my time is rapidly running out, my support of the public land that we don't, we don't seize that. I was disappointed in what happened after January and how the decisions of the city commission weren't followed. I will emphasize that I still think that we need to take aggressive action there and ensure that this does not happen again anywhere. There are some really beautiful pieces of land out here and we need to ensure that they stay in the hands of the public. Moving on, park access. First of all, I want to state that the park opening, which unfortunately happened at the same time as the veterans thing, so I couldn't attend both, but I have had the opportunity to walk it several times. My dog loves it. The park is beautiful. I do note a severe difference, once you get to Man at the Island, in the amount of money that was spent improving it. But I think it's very important that we ensure that that is city property. I know, speaking to the security guards, they're stating that, oh, this is owned by Brown and Brown now. And I said, I don't think so. And I think it's important that that message get across. This is city. Yes, they may have signed a lease. I hope we did not sell our soul when we did that. But we need to make sure that that entrance, access, at least the Man at the Island, is still open to the public. And I know it's a fine line we have to walk between that, but it is beautiful. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Brittany Presley and on deck is Malcolm Williams. Presley, excuse me.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Presley. I'm here today representing the Bethune-Cutman University Black Male College Explorers Program. We are a program that we assist at-risk young males in our community in grades six through 12. We provide tutoring services for them throughout the academic school year as well as we have a summer program where we take them on different college tour tours throughout the world. I will say that, not just in the state of Florida. So I'm here and we're seeking any type of financial assistance so that we can continue to take these boys on college tours as well as provide hot meals for them during the summer and the academic calendar year. Funding for our program has decreased drastically over the last several years. And so that's why I'm here today, seeking any type of, any type of financial assistance for our program for the summer. Thank you.
500? Okay, our next speaker is Malcolm Williams and on deck is Ann Ruby.
Good evening, everyone. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Levy Avenue. It's always me that comes with the bad news. Got some good, some bad, some ugly. Hopefully I can end it on a good note. One of the things we want to talk about is for, for months and we've heard, always heard, we were down 26 officers, 26 officers. And then to hear the recent number that we were down 47 was kind of shocking, especially to us as residents. So my question, or 41, even if it's in the 40s, my, my question, my concern is, what constitutes a crisis within our city? If this ever happens again, I hope we don't go back to it. Is there some type of emergency or something that we can get into, especially with the county, that we can get, you know, Volusia County officer responding to certain incidents in our city? Is there a memorandum? Is there something? Because the response times in our city was very horrible on a lot of situations, especially me with my business, my business where I work at on MLK at the Checkers. They pretty much told me, if you ain't getting shot, we ain't coming. And for us, we've been trying to develop and that was literally told, told to me. We've been trying to get some things started in that area with that property and especially the surrounding area. So it's a little disheartening for us. If we pull the records, you guys probably got 22 calls from my employment in two weeks. And we know, we got response for none of them.
You, you work there now?
Yes, sir.
And that happened recently?
Yes. And I've called probably 15 of them.
So you're here reporting that that's a problem at Checkers?
Yes, it's not, it's a problem at Checkers, but a surrounding area is actually the problem. They're coming to our building. And what we're, what the problem is, we're having people in certain situations coming to our drive-through, there's coming up to people from, that are sitting in our restaurant area. There's, it's causing problems. You come out of MLK at night, it's, it's just, it's problematic. Drugs, violence, all of it, it's a lot. That one, one I want to stay on. Second thing is, we're talking about our neighborhood groups. Cedar Highlands Community gave us a five-page complaint letter and just by coming to the neighborhood group and having a conversation with them, we're able to get that complaint down to two. So I'm glad we have a commissioner there to help get that last, that last piece of paper down with them. We've had some great conversations in our neighborhood groups, so we want to be very appreciative of what we have been accomplishing that. Also, we've, even with Ms. Dallas, she shares our, her sister supporting sisters' information in our group and we already see the impact of that. So we're very appreciative of commitment that this commission is going, especially into our community. I want to end on this note. I did it in May, so I better do it in June. Happy Father's Day to all of you fathers. This is a very exciting week with Juneteenth, Father's Day, and my grandmother's 76th birthday. So happy birthday, Joanne Tucker. Hopefully I get her a good gift this year because I messed up last year.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby and on deck is John Birch.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I want to urge you all to attend the event at the Historical Society. They're, they're doing a lot of great programs. They're under new management. Lot of great stuff is coming up, including, today I picked up from the Historical Society, this, which you all have a copy of. It is a firsthand account, very chatty, by Eileen Hubbard Butts on how, what?
Is yours typed?
No, there's a typed version. There's a typed transcript and then there's her original handwritten one. Eileen Hubbard Butts on how these women got together and worked, and petitioned Mayor McLeod Bethune to inveigh upon the president to bring the WAC Training Center here. And it's very chatty, it's, but it's also very personal. And it's her firsthand account, written in 1975. It would have been in the spring of 1942 that this actually happened. So this is one of the great resources that we found, that I didn't find, the wonderful volunteers that the Historical Society found, but I'm sharing it with you because I think it's, it's really good to remember that lots of great things happen out of the social lives of women. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is John Birch and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
You know Malcolm recognized fathers, but there are some mothers that are playing dual roles as well. So happy Father's Day to them too.
Some fathers playing dual roles. You can recognize them or mothers there.
Mr. Birch, are you coming?
Praise the Lord. Happy Father's Day. I brought our commissioner Derrick Henry, one.
Watermill.
Right out the field. We brought the other city manager. And we brought. No. Always four men. I got to go get another one. Praise the Lord. All I want to say is, I drove all the way from Black, all the way from Star, just to say, Happy Father's Day. Now, I got a couple things. Just a couple. Praise the Lord. Nothing negative, all positive. All positive. Okay. As I spoke, praise the Lord, as I spoke, I'm happy. I ain't going to lie to y'all. I'm, I'm in the last part of my life and I see so much adversity, so much drama in life. And so what I done, when y'all pushed me out, I went to Bradford County and I walk around with beads on and give out watermelons. They love it. They accepted me. And all I'm saying to you all is, God loves each and every one of you all. And I know you have a big job to do. And especially the men. Since his Father's Day, you know, we've been dropping the ball for a long time. We can go all the way back to what? Adam. You know, God assigned us as being the head, me. And guess what we did? We let the women take over. And they're still taking over. But men, we need to realize that God has chosen us as being the head. And we need to step up. And all I ever talk about is my neighborhood. And the reason why I don't come in, I don't comment on giving 70,000 of this one, this one or that one. All I talk about is, what about our neighborhood? Our parents fought so hard. And I know you know what I'm saying. Even though one day you going to think about it, your daddy worked hard. My daddy worked hard. You work hard. And all I ever say is, we need, we are not equal. We, as a black men, are not equal. You know, we are down here, no matter what y'all want to say about being equal, we are not. We are not. And I accept that. But what I don't accept is for men that's in position, that can do something, that can do something to allow us not to become equal, just to become, how do you say it? I love what I do. And ain't nobody going to change that. And I love the male, no matter what I said about the ball, he's a good ball player too. You understand? All I say is, I rushed all the way down, I, I run down Highway 100 just to get here. Say, I love you all. I bring one, two, three, four. Got one more. And I love, it's four. I got three. I got one more. I'm a go get.
Thank you, sir.
Those watermelons have seeds in them?
Don't go there right out the field, baby. Good day.
Real watermelon.
What's that?
A real watermelon.
Real watermelon, baby. God bless y'all. Thank you.
Our next. Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis and on deck is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening again. My name is Doyle Lewis, Daytona Beach, United States. I had to follow him last meeting. Oh, I got about four or five things to say. On the rising rents across America, there's a way to touch, talk to these hedge funds that are doing this and kind of join them a little bit so you can control them a little bit better than what they are doing to every city in America, especially in the larger cities. You just got to do some communication, if they will. I've always built homes and I always have this saying about homes. They're not houses to me, they're homes. We care. If you need help, let us look inside because that's how we care. Because we're there to help you with your home. That's what's the hedge funds and the rising rents because that's a very major thing because I've seen some new vans in town. I've seen some new people in town. I've helped them try to get some food, tell them where to go just this past week. Oh, and I forgot, on Sunday I was robbed just around the corner from here. So that's adding to the restaurant gentleman that just was talking about bad people around the restaurant at night because I was robbed. The second thing, and it's a little bit off course of the, the rising rents and the housing, it's the boats. I talked to you about a boat, my boat that I was claiming and that I was buying. I ran into two brick walls after the speech. I'm still going after my boat. I finally found out where it's located. One of the boaters told me. Bumped into him. So I'll just let you know, I'm still fighting for my boat back. The housing for the homeless and poor, that's going to get worse because of what I just said about the rising rents and what a couple other people said about the rising rents. I've seen new vans in town, new people living in their cars. They're going to lose, they're going to lose their way of living because there's no place to park. I rented that with my bicycle today in Ormond. They was wondering why I was parked. I was taking a swim in the ocean. I was drying off. They stared at my bicycle trying to figure out what to do with it for an hour. I finally walked over, unlocked it, said bye. It's my property, I can take it. That's what I'm going to do with my boat too. And the new park has almost no bicycle parking. My name is Doyle.
Our next speaker is Jenny Nazak.
Good evening, city leaders and fellow citizens. Seed, watermelons need seeds, right? See, like really, these seedless watermelons, how are we going to get new watermelons when we only have seedless watermelons? That's always been a major conundrum for me. So I'm really, I hope those things are full of seeds and please disperse the seeds throughout our city before it's too late. Okay? Really. And I want to say the park is beautiful, the reopened park. I was really happy about that. that. And, you know, the plants and everything are even more gorgeous than I expected and it really made me think about how I've been thinking about how I would like to see some more horticultural training for our city employees to have the opportunity to get some more horticultural training if they want to, to have that be a career subpath and also for the young people in our city for horticulture as a career path. Obviously, I'm always talking about the environment. I wish my dear neighbor Frederick Brown were still here because he always teases me about the toast and he goes, "Where's your toast on your hat?" And so, I had a response for him, but he's gone. Frederick, if you're listening, my toast vaporized while I was running over the bridge to this meeting because under the blazing sun, the, the toast itself, the burnt toast vaporized, you know, which is my way of saying it's hot. And we're coming up on a virtually rainless June and, you know, heat mitigation is always going to be an important topic. And I have gathered many, many resources about heat mitigation, drought, flood mitigation, green infrastructure and all that. So, and it's too big to fit into three-minute comments, which is why I try to send you guys emails that are entertaining and useful and I will always remain a resource. Anyone can always call on me. I do not want our city to have water problems and it's, that's going to be a worldwide thing. And also the apartments, thank you all. Thank you, Commissioner Strickland, Commissioner Henry, for everybody who's mentioning the housing. Everybody knows it's a nationwide thing. A lot of us, you know, I've been lucky. I got to choose my career and when I was young, I kind of dropped out of the middle class and I chose some careers that I knew would be low income because I just really wanted to do them. And I was able to live because it was easier to find low-end housing of all different sorts. But all the different types of creative low-end housing have kind of dried up. Even the mobile home parks and RV parks are getting bought up by those investment companies that then jack up the rent. Like a lot of housing has dried up. In my neighborhood, a lot of apartment buildings have, some of them just got old and had to get knocked down. I mean, just, there is attrition in the supply of apartments. So, I'm so happy we're all going to be working on this. Thank you all. Have a good evening. See you at Juneteenth.
Jenny, we, I just want to let you know that we just met with University of Florida's IFIS program to bring some programs to our area.
That was my final speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is that it? Good night, Daytona Beach.